Of allegiance and a word of prayer, please feel free to join us if you'd like.
If you'll bow with me.
Our gracious father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for this city that you have blessed us to be stewards of. We just ask, Lord, that everything that we do within the city is pleasing to you and that you are represented in all that we do. We ask that you bless this meeting and bless us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
You should have received copies of the March 12, 2019 City Council minutes. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Should be time for our financials. Mr. Winningham, I think you're up next.
Don't have a lot of comments prepared tonight. We're looking at the February financials. Sales tax was down again. It was down 4.4 percent. We're down three and a half for the year. But keep in mind, this is an annual, this is a year-to-year number. Last year, we were up, we were up almost 7 percent in January and up 16 percent in February. That was for '17 shopping season, which was the first, it was the first time that Sam's Academy and that shopping center was open. So I think what we're seeing now is just a correction for that. But it is, we are down, but I don't think it's anything for anybody to be concerned about. Other than that, everything is, you know, just two months into the year, so there's not, not a whole lot of big things to talk about. Everything's going along pretty much as scheduled.
Make a motion to approve the monthly financials?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials ending February 28, 2019. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Winningham.
Yes, sir.
First up is our standing committees, and we always turn this portion over to Mr. Hawkins for community development. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is consideration to approve the nomination of Jackie Wright to the Conway Housing Authority Board, and I strongly move that we accept Jackie Wright as that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the nomination of Jackie Wright to the Conway Housing Authority Board. Any further discussion? This will be a great addition to our city, and we appreciate it. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector place liens on properties as a result of incurred expenses by the city. The first location is at 1625 Jasmine. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 1625 Jasmine with us this evening? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone stepping forward, so we have a resolution for this item. It's our resolution R. 1906.
Make the motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to place lien on property of 1625 Jasmine in the amount of $198.65. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Second location, Mr. Mayor, is at 275 South Ash. $220.42 is due the city. Is there an owner or representative of an owner of 275 South Ash with us? Mayor, I don't see anyone at that location. We have a resolution here. It's resolution R. 1907.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution in the amount of $220.42 for the property located at 275 South Ash. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero.
And the third item here, Mr. Mayor, is 1,700 Appalachian in the city of Conway, amount of $429.94 is due the city. Is there an owner or representative of an owner of 1,700 Appalachian in Conway with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone for that, so we have a resolution here. It's resolution R. 1908.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, place lien on the property at 1,700 Appalachian, the amount of $429.94. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve the program, year 2019, Community Block, Community Development Block Grant Budget and the submission of the 2019 Action Plan. And Kiara, I've not looked, but I bet you're standing right there.
I am. Good guess. So with CDBG, we are trying to be more proactive this year as well as in future years, so we are submitting our action plan early this year with contingency language in the resolution. So all of these services and projects are allocated based on a set percentage. So when we get our actual number, it'll be increased or decreased, but that percentage won't change. So if you look, well, ideally, this hopefully will let us have a 30-day citizens' participation plan earlier, and when we do get the actual number, we'll be able to go ahead and submit our action plan and get our money sooner. And we'll have consistent dates each year as well. If you look at the budget, all of the services are pretty much the same. We've added two new services, as well as, this is the first year that we will be completely out of Pine Street with two new projects and an emergency shelter, as well as a rental assistance program that we would like to implement with CDBG. So if you don't have any questions?
Will the rental assistance be available everywhere in the city or just within certain census tracts?
It will be available citywide. However, it can only help low to moderate income persons.
I make a motion for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion?
Can you define low to moderate income for me?
It's going to be falling into the HUD guidelines, so depending on the 2018 HUD guidelines, 80 percent low to moderate income, 60 percent low to moderate income. So those guidelines aren't in front of me, but that's what's, that's what we go by.
Ballpark?
It depends on the fourth, if it's for family persons, I don't know.
Gotcha. Could you find that out for me and give?
I definitely will.
On that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kiara.
I definitely will.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero.
And I will say, the CDBG folks, they are really impressed with the job that Kiara and Felicia are doing. They have dug us out of a pretty deep hole, and anytime we talk to them or I talk to them, they just really brag on the job, great job that they're doing. So keep it up, ladies.
That's good to hear.
Thanks, Kim.
That's good to hear.
Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing a change in staffing levels for the airport department, and I wasn't sure who was coming forward. Hi!
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Ms. Lisa Mayberry-Williams.
We, due to some staffing openings, we need to add an additional full-time airport line technician, level-two position, to the airport staff. This position will require more experience in the previous airport line technician, but we see the need to hire someone with more experience immediately. So that's why we were coming forward with this.
We have one person out there right now who's handling these duties, and they're working seven days a week, eight hours a day. We have someone with these credentials who is ready to come to work for us. So if y'all approve this position tonight, we will bring them on, and then when a new, we hire a new director, probably they're going to let the two part-time positions go away. So budget-wise, it's just going to be a small increase in the, in that enterprise fund for a short time.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Move for adoption of ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with emergency clause. Any further discussion? What's our number, Mr. Garrett?
It's going to be O. 1936.
Thirty-six, thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
Say aye?
No.
He always follows after one of y'all, but he knows I'm going to miss out.
Is there a mercy clause? Yes.
Yes, he said with the emergency.
All right, mercy clause. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
No.
He always follows after one of y'all, but he knows I'm going to miss out.
Is there a mercy clause? Yes.
Yes, he said with the emergency.
All right, mercy clause. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
No. He always follows after one of y'all, but he knows I'm going to miss out.
Is there a mercy clause? Yes.
Yes, he said with the emergency.
All right, mercy clause. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
No. He always follows after one of y'all, but he knows I'm going to miss out.
Is there a mercy clause? Yes.
Yes, he said with the emergency.
All right, mercy clause. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Both of those. Passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I want some more time.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve the bid for brick pavers for the city of Conway, and I didn't know whether it was you or Finley going to talk about this, brick pavers.
I think it's pretty cut and dry, so I will do it, if that's okay with you.
Be great with me.
We just received one bid on these, and we're actually asking you to allow us to enter into an agreement. There aren't very many vendors that provide bricks, so if you will approve that tonight, we would appreciate it.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for brick pavers. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's going to be R. 1910. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
And the next item is a resolution to approve the purchase of a dump truck for the Transportation Department, and Jamie?
I will take this one as well. We found that it was the most cost-efficient to go through an NJ, it's actually Sourcewell, but it's now, it was NJPA, a procurement co-op to purchase this. It would be cheaper, and we would be able to get the truck quicker that way, too.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. I have it as 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request for the purchase of a dump truck for the Sanitation Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance rezoning property at 1106 and 1108 Donaghy Avenue from R. 2A to R. 2 and H.R., and this was reviewed by the Planning Commission when? James?
At our last meeting last week.
Thank you.
James, would you explain to everyone that's watching on TV kind of what this means?
Yes, so this, this is a rezoning request. So what zoning sort of dictates is what is allowed to be built on a lot, and so when you have a zoning change, that's changing what uses are permitted by rights. So in this instance, we're taking, the applicant is requesting to take a lot where there's currently a duplex and attempt to split off a portion of the lot to enable another structure to be built on the back end of that. So there's an existing duplex at 1106 and 1108 Donaghy that's currently zoned R. 2A. There's sort of a section of a lot next door that's, that's large enough when you change the zoning of the existing duplex and the adjacent lot to enable a house to be built. So the maximum density, you couldn't redevelop the duplex lot into anything that's higher intensity, and the maximum intensity that would be on the other lot would be a single family residence. The new lot that would be created is called H.R., Historic Residential. It doesn't really have anything to do with whether the, the house is historic or not. This area falls within the old Conway overlay, and so one of the things that was adopted some number of years ago was a historic residential zone. The intent of that was really to establish smaller lot sizes that are consistent with the historic lot context in that area. So that's, that's really what that's all about. There's only been a couple properties that have actually used that H.R. zone, but I would anticipate more properties using that in the future. Once that, if, if this does move forward, the applicant will follow with a replat of the property, and then we'll likely see a building permit come in, being requested by the Historic District Commission. It would be reviewed through the old Conway overlay, and that'd kind of be the, the steps in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for James?
Make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
That was O. 1937.
Thirty-seven. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting the annexation of property at the southeast corner, the intersection of East Dave Ward Drive and Arkansas 286 and Thomas G. Wilson Drive, and we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O. 1938.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's going to be R. 1910. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
And the next item is a resolution to approve the purchase of a dump truck for the Transportation Department, and Jamie?
I will take this one as well. We found that it was the most cost-efficient to go through an NJ, it's actually Sourcewell, but it's now, it was NJPA, a procurement co-op to purchase this. It would be cheaper, and we would be able to get the truck quicker that way, too.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. I have it as 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request for the purchase of a dump truck for the Sanitation Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's going to be R. 1910. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
And the next item is a resolution to approve the purchase of a dump truck for the Transportation Department, and Jamie?
I will take this one as well. We found that it was the most cost-efficient to go through an NJ, it's actually Sourcewell, but it's now, it was NJPA, a procurement co-op to purchase this. It would be cheaper, and we would be able to get the truck quicker that way, too.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. I have it as 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request for the purchase of a dump truck for the Sanitation Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance rezoning property at 1106 and 1108 Donaghy Avenue from R. 2A to R. 2 and H.R., and this was reviewed by the Planning Commission when? James?
At the, our last meeting last week.
Last one, thank you. Yeah.
James, would you explain to everyone that's watching on TV kind of what this means?
Yes, so this, this is a rezoning request. So what zoning sort of dictates is what is allowed to be built on a lot, and so when you have a zoning change, that's changing what uses are permitted by rights. So in this instance, we're taking, the applicant is requesting to take a lot where there's currently a duplex and attempt to split off a portion of the lot to enable another structure to be built on the back end of that. So there's an existing duplex at 1106 and 1108 Donaghy that's currently zoned R. 2A. There's sort of a section of a lot next door that's, that's large enough when you change the zoning of the existing duplex and the adjacent lot to enable a, a house to be built. So the maximum density, you couldn't redevelop the, the duplex lot into anything that's higher intensity, and the maximum intensity that would be on the other lot would be a single-family residence. The new lot that would be created is called H.R., Historic Residential. It doesn't really have anything to do with whether the, the house is historic or not. This area falls within the old Conway overlay, and so one of the things that was adopted some number of years ago was a historic residential zone. The intent of that was really to establish smaller lot sizes that are consistent with the historic lot context in that area. So that's, that's really what that's all about. There's only been a couple properties that have actually used that H.R. zone, but I would anticipate more properties using that in the future. Once that, if, if this does move forward, the applicant will follow with a replat of the property, and then we'll likely see a, a building permit come in, being requested by the Historic District Commission. It would be reviewed through the old Conway overlay, and that'd kind of be the, the steps in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for James?
Make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
No. He always follows after one of y'all, but he knows I'm going to miss out.
Is there a mercy clause? Yes.
Yes, he said with the emergency.
All right, mercy clause. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
This is eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next one's fun. Next, we've got, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance appropriating funds and accepting the low bidder for the remodel project of 1111 Main Street. And, Mr. Sal, we are glad to see you, and glad to see you have brought some good stuff to us tonight.[1665.25]
What would it take to get you to just kick it on up to a convention center?
A longer conversation.
Little bit more water.
More than three acres.
I do wanna ask James, hey, James, what is the master plan future out in that area right now? Is there anything? I just can't remember.
It's, that is an area that, based on the context of all the change that has happened, that was historically looked at as an industrial area that's obviously changed quite a bit in the last few years with the emphasis of retail that has gone in there. So, what the plan indicated was actually a higher-intensity use of being general industrial. Based on that, staff reviewing it, looking at a C3 zoning, the official policy was industrial, so we said, "Well, that would be a step down." It would be consistent with the surrounding uses, so that was based, that was why our recommendation was made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, James. Counsel, any further comments, questions?
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. I have it as ordinance number 38.
Thirty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Mel, I'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And the emergency clause? Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And the emergency clause? Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And the emergency clause? Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
This is eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, next one's fun. Next, we've got, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance appropriating funds and accepting the low bidder for the remodel project of 1111 Main Street. And Mr. Sal, we are glad to see you and glad to see you have brought some good stuff to us tonight.
Nice to be here, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Rick Sal from Sal Architects, here to report our bid results to you guys. On March 14th, we took eight bids from eight different contractors. I am sorry to say that we didn't have any local bidders as a result of that. The low bidder was actually out of Cersei Wagner Construction. In addition to the eight bids that we took, there were six alternates, three of which we have accepted. And so, let me just give you the base numbers. You guys probably have their, I have them there in front of you. The base bid with the three approved alternates is $1,803,142. Uh, $142. All the other additional costs, which would include all of the fees, furniture, fixtures, equipment, and everything, totals up $855,485.20. And you add those together for a total project cost of $2,658,627.20. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about the bid process or anything else that I can answer.
Where'd you get that 20 cents?
Hey, I'm just reading what Felicia gave me.
After the bid process is accepted, when will you, when will the project start? Do you have any idea?
Yes, the project essentially will start immediately. If we can get a contract executed, then they'll start mobilizing and getting on the job site as quickly as they possibly can. So, there will be very little delay at this point.
And they estimated six months?
Six-month construction time, yes. So, assuming.
About December, October.
That's good.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion.
Emergency clause.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Rick, on the original tabulation that we saw, the time of completion said three months.
Yes, it did. I confronted the contractor on that, told him that was absurd, so please give me the actual number. And he immediately changed it to six months. I'm not sure why three months showed up on his bid.
And you are comfortable with his contractor?
I am, yes. We checked them out. We've never worked with them before. We, but that's not a requirement for the low bidder, that we have worked with them before. But they did check out. They are reputable. They did follow the rules. They did submit a bid appropriately. And so, we found no compelling reason to disqualify them. And we feel like we can work with them for a successful project.
It's a bonded project.
It is.
Thank you very much. Y'all have any questions? Mr. Whinningham? Well, we're, any finance questions? We got it covered. Whinningham, would you agree? Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And the emergency clause? Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mercy clause? Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?